Good morning, everyone. Call this meeting to order. The county commissioners, the date is August 18th, 2025. You're off and running, Dottie.
We are. We are off and running. And let's talk a little bit about our work comp claims. Something actually positive. The one claim that we have had since 2020 is pending being closed. So I had a report, a call from IPEP last week that it should be soon. So that will be really great. We currently have six claims, open claims. They're all from the sheriff's office. And so then that would bring us down to five open claims at the sheriff's office. There were none that were closed in July. So they were all from, well, we had one that was opened in July. It was a prisoner who bit one of our officers. So, you know, with those, whenever, you know, it's, yeah, a dog bite, you know, you check for things. Human bites, difficult. They, well, you know, as you know, Kellen, you know, they do some testing. They do, they want to make sure that the person who is bit is taken care of. So that one's, that one could be, could be on our, could be on our line for a little bit. So that's actually good news. Then we have two claims that came from the same incident back in, well, a year ago, August of 2024, that these two officers were on the scene of a battery and the suspect was resisting. And right now, IPEP is very much, if there is a person who caused the issue against our employee, they will go after that person who inflicted the damage to try to go through that person's insurance company or their, you know, file a lawsuit or whatever they have to do. They go into subrogation. So those two are still, they're still working on that. And as far as we know, the case actually with this person who was then arrested is still open. So there's, you know, it gets a little complicated.
But I guess my question would be, subrogation could still be open, but they could still close the claims if the sheriff's officers are healed up and their workers' comp claim is done, they could still close down the claim in later.
Um, you know, yeah. It usually kind of goes.
Claim open on our books.
Right, yeah. Yep. So they will still pursue whatever. But of course, you know, just like, you know, with your auto insurance, our insurance will take care of our employees. So, you know, we never have to worry about that. It's not, you know, contingent upon that other party, you know, making any payment. They are recovering there. So that's, yeah, that's good. Another thing, so that's it for work comp. Very, yeah, very happy about that. And so at our last department heads meeting, there was a, actually, it started, my, our HR network, city and county HR people, a question came across about when our employees are traveling on behalf of the county, if there, there were any policies, stipulations, whatever, with employees sharing a hotel room while they are at these, these trainings. And so it was, it was a very spirited discussion as, as you two were there. In addition, the HR network also had a very spirited discussion via, via email. Most of the cities and counties had an unwritten rule that people did not share hotel rooms. And I was just speaking to the, actually, the clerk of Adams County, and I were at an event last week, and we were discussing this, and she said, oh, no, she never, you know, she would never have any of her employees share a room. So anyway, I had read a memo from a previous group of county commissioners from DeKalb County. It was from 2019, and the recommendation was that when traveling on county work training, to please share rooms when possible, and also to carpool as much as possible. And I just feel, and our group of HR people, and I know attorneys are feeling that in this day and age of harassment, of the Me Too movement, just being cognizant of our employees' privacies, that probably we should, as department heads, have enough money in our budgets that if we want to send X number of people to a training, and it is going to involve a hotel stay, that we have enough money to provide a hotel room for each of our employees. So anyway, that was brought up as we don't have anything in our travel policy. I mean, I looked through, I don't, I mean, I think that's her.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not sure where all this came from, but.
I just explained where it came from.
We've never required people to room together. It was put in the memo in 2019 just as an option. Like, my office, we share rooms all the time, for one, because we don't like to be in the rooms by ourselves, it's boring, and you're not in the room very often. And so we pay for one room instead of three. But that's our choices. We don't, but we've not ever made somebody share a room.
I think that it's, as I said, in this day and age, I think everyone should be in a separate room, and then that way you have no, you shouldn't have too many issues.
So you're wanting the commissioners to require everybody to have their own?
Not necessarily require, but I think a discussion needs to be held. I'm not sure that if there's a, you know, a need to go, a change, it's not really even a change, a mention, something, but we still do have some departments that still go by that 2019 recommendation. So bringing it to the full commissioners today.
Yeah. Let's, let's dive into this. I think we need to address it sooner than later. So commissioners, what's your thoughts? Any thoughts, opinions?
Yeah, I think we need to change that language to not, well, how do I want to say this, that it needs to say that one person per room, but I guess if somebody wants to room together, that's their choice, and it should not be, you know, the counties did not have that wording the way it is. We need to have Andrew, I guess, look into that language to make that change that says one person per room, and then just leave it be as that, and not mandatory, obviously, but it should be changed. It was definitely, this day and age, needs to be changed to one person per room.
Right now, it almost sounds like it's a preference of multiple people per room, and maybe we should change it to a choice or something. I don't know. I can work with Dottie on the language a little bit.
Sure. Yeah.
Everyone, comments?
I mean, I think everybody should have their option to have their own room, and the budget should reflect that. And if, but if they want to room up together, that's their choice, too. I mean, I know people like to do that, hang out, and like Susan said, sometimes they just lonely in their room, but I don't like the memo of encouraging and saying you have to kind of do that, that's what it feels like. I feel like the budget should reflect that, everybody should have their own room if they want to go have their own space. Now, if they choose to, yeah, if they choose to room up together, that's their choice, but they should have the option to have their own room and not feel like they have to room with somebody going on a conference.
Okay.
Personally.
I can draft something up and work with Dottie, and then we can, you guys.
Personally, my thought is it needs to be specific in the handbook, one person per room. This notion that they're going to get lonesome, they can go from room to room. It's not like they're locked in their room and can't get out.
Right.
Go visit the coworker. Anybody, when it comes time to sleep, they need to have their own room. We don't need gray areas in this business. We need it cut and dried, to the point. And so I don't think there's, if they want to do that privately, that's up to them. But that does not need to be in the handbook, that they can jointly share a room if they so please. It needs to be specific, one room per person.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree that there's plenty of time for socialization, meeting at these seminars or trainings, but you're right, the privacy and sleeping, nobody wants to be near a snorer, you know? Yeah. So anyway, I appreciate that very much. Andrew and I can, can work on that. Happy to do that.
I remember thinking that my dad was a bad snorer until I shared a room with him going to a deposition in Maryville, and I kept him up at night because I was snoring. I was able to sleep fine, my dear old dad couldn't sleep, so I learned pretty quick. It was me that was the problem.
Oh, my gosh.
I'd like a motion for Andrew and, and Dottie to make that change in the handbook.
I would so move that we have Andrew and Dottie work together to change that wording in our handbook. I'll second.
Motion is second. Additional comments?
If, I guess, additional, bring it back to us.
Absolutely. I was going to say that. Yeah, I thought about that, too. You guys need to approve the final language, of course.
Yeah, right, yep. I think it'll actually probably be in the travel policy. And it, it can, of course, be, you know, mentioned elsewhere, but I'll, we'll look through the handbook to see where else it might be appropriate.
Comments from the public?
Hey, Lita Hollinger, county recorder, I will never, and have never, there, everybody has their own room. I think the counties open themselves up. If you don't, if they want to get together on their own, but I think as long as the county can show they've had a room for each person, I think you're, you're covering yourselves. But my office will never double occupancy, never have, never will, as long as I'm in. So I just think it's a bad policy.
Is there an issue, like, has somebody complained?
We had, that came through our HR network, so in another county, somebody.
Indy-Kalb County.
Susan, it's not an issue. We're not, we're not debating whether somebody complained or not. We're just changing the handbook. Leave the county of liability. It's been brought to our attention as a liability issue.
I just want it clear that the county has never made somebody room together, even with that language of the memo. We've never required that, so to make it clear, with that language, we didn't require anybody.
And I just think it, it just leaves a whole lot of, I know it works, if, if the elected official or the department head, however it may be, they've got to conduct some business, you're not asking that employee to leave. Same difference if they have an issue at home and they're talking on the phone. They should, no one should have to leave a room so the other one has privacy. They should each have their own room for a lot of reasons.
Thank you, Lita. Okay, a call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You and Andrew, get it and write this thing up and.
Then we'll get it back to you.
Yep, we will, yeah. Well, Morgan has a few things.
Wait, one quick question. Are we putting it in the travel policy and in the handbook both, or just one?
We shall see, whatever Andrew and I come up with, I guess.
Is the travel policy not in the handbook necessarily? I don't know what's.
It is.
Or it is in the handbook?
Yeah, it's in the handbook.
So then.
If it's in the travel policy, probably should be in the handbook.
Have you guys looked at the travel policy lately to see if there was other changes that you wanted to amend?
The only other one was the meal issue with, you know, one day travel. And I've, I've attempted, have not failed, but trying to get hold of the IRS to see if there's an update since it's been several years, to see if the IRS has changed their rule. But as we all know, trying to get hold of an IRS agent to actually.
I have been trying as well, because I read the minutes from that one department head. I've been trying to figure that out as well. I just didn't know if there was anything else in the policy, if we're.
That's the only one I noticed, because it's under the same heading in there. So anyway.
I have no other. Do you have anything, Dottie, by chance to add?
I don't believe that there's anything. I've looked through there, and it appears, you know, the reimbursement is, you know, pretty clear. Everything else seems, you know, seems clear.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right, we are set on that. Anything else?
Well, Morgan has a few things.
So I had originally reserved April 3rd for the Parkview Wellness event, but that is Good Friday, so we have rescheduled it for April 10th. And we will talk more about that in the wellness program with our meeting with APEX on September 15th. Hiring wise, Community Corrections has hired two new RFO officers. I'm onboarding one today and one next Monday, and they are still looking for a part-time field officer. The treasurer is looking for a first deputy, and this would be an in-training position. They're going to have that posting open until August 29th. That's all I have for hiring.
Okay.
The only other thing, and it's a big thing, because it really affects the highway department so much, is our Americans with Disabilities Act plan, along with our Title VI plan. And so it's one of those things that these two plans have to do with accessibility and non-discrimination. And with the funds coming in from the state, Ben being able to apply for grants, these things need to be in place. So it seems like everything's coming all at once, because Ben and I, Ben, Larry, and Morgan and I got together last week and discussed some of the, these updates that we need to do. So two things that we need to do is decide who will be the Title VI coordinator and who will be the ADA coordinator. And historically, since I came on board, those have been added to my plate. And so basically what that does is I'm the keeper of the documents, I update them as Ben has projects or Larry has projects that have to do with anything that makes the county property more accessible to individuals with disabilities. So that would mean sidewalks with the, well, let's call them the Lego sections, you know, they look like Legos, but that is to, you know, to warn individuals with disabilities, low vision, things like that. Also, when it comes to accessibility, that would mean individuals who have, English is not their first language, or it could mean sign language. And so for years, we have had a document that every office has, that if someone comes in, needs some assistance, they need something translated, that is available to them. We also kind of keep up to date on what kind of translation services are available. The courts generally have theirs that go through the state, so they have, they have things. It's just a myriad of things, and it, like I said, it's, it's about accessibility and anti-discrimination. We believe that we will serve everyone, you know, all of the citizens of DeKalb County, all the citizens who need information from us as, you know, all county departments. So we have those two things. We are updating or basically reaffirming the mission, the, the statement of accessibility. And so I've given those documents to Susan and for your signature, so that we can add those to our plan. And Ben, when he is making the grants, that we know that we have those things on file, and we need to have those also on file with the state, or his, yeah, with the, with NDOT for him to get his grant money. Yep.
Okay. How often do we have to update those paperwork? Is it yearly, or is it?
One, the ADA is every three years, and then the other one is every year, or vice versa. I can't remember. Yeah. So, and what we do is we keep an inventory, and this even includes bridges, because so many of our bridges have to have a, you know, you have to be able to cross that bridge as a, as a pedestrian. So we keep track of those. We just have, you know, a lot of things that come from, really from Ben and from Larry. So it's just a continual, and, and then to be able to get it back to the state to let them know that we are doing our due diligence, and it's a good faith effort on our part to keep these things free, so that people can access them. Yeah.
Comments?
You willing to take that on again?
Sure, sir. Unless, of course, you want to. You know, I wouldn't want to, you know, far be it for me to.
I was going to ask, Dottie, is this the best fit for you?
You know, we didn't have really Title VI prior to my coming on board. It was one of those things, oh, we need to do this. The ADA was, prior to Ben coming on board, it was when it was started, oh, gosh, they did the first, the first review back in 2012, 2013. So that would have been the highway superintendent at the time. And it just seemed right to bring it together with one person, and I just work with Ben, you know, and with Larry, to, you know, keep these things updated, and so it seems, it seems like a, a good fit, you know?
Okay. But accept a motion.
So we're going to do the resolution one?
Yeah, yeah, there's the resolution, there are the two things, the other, blah, blah.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, you've got them all.
Three other things.
Yes, yep.
But we'll probably want to do them separate.
I agree.
Yeah.
So this is the one that says Dottie is going to be the.
The 2025 R-11?
Yes, that one. Here we go.
I'll make, make a motion to accept resolution 2025 R-11 as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor. Additional comments?
What was that one? Is that the ADA, or is that the?
That is appointing the Title 4D coordinator.
Yeah.
I was sixty, sorry.
Title VI, I know.
I'm dyslexic, that's why. Sixty, yes.
All right.
Do you need to see this, Andrew?
I believe I have seen, I think you got me the Title VI, if that's.
Yeah.
It's in the pack.
Yeah, I looked at it. Okay, thank you. No, I approve this. It needs to be done, and it seems to me that the HR position is the ideal one for this, because they are up on the federal statutes on these things.
Try.
Do you have a motion?
We had.
Motion is second.
And a second.
Additional comments from the public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. What else you got?
Okay, so then we have the Title VI complaint procedures. This is, there's nothing to sign, but we need to approve that.
I would so move that we accept the Title VI complaint procedure as presented.
I'm pretty sure that's sort of like a legal requirement that comes down from the state or the federal. We have the choice to change those. Language, I don't think, right, Dottie?
Not really, yeah.
I'll second.
Any motion, any second on the floor? Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And now we have the ADA grievance procedure to approve.
Make a motion to accept the ADH, ADA grievance procedure for DeKalb County as presented.
I will second.
Motion is second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then we have the non-discrimination statement of policy for all of you to sign.
I would so move we accept the non-discrimination statement of policy for DeKalb County as presented with the Title VI implement, implementation plan. I'll second.
Motion is second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the only other thing that I had in the HR section was the information about fare. Were we, did we need to discuss that? Did we not need to discuss that? The parking?
Oh, not, not really, no. I had already talked to the, the fair board, and we made that same agreement that we've had for the last few years, that any employee, as long as they have their parking tag hanging from their rearview mirror, if they cannot find a parking spot during their regular working hours in the, whatever parking spaces that we have left, that they may park in the grassy area down at the fairgrounds. So we, yeah, so we made, yeah. That was good.
Good deal. Good deal. Anything else? Anything for Dottie?
Anybody? All right. Okay, great. Thank you so much for all of those things.
Have a good week. Okay, Anton, you're on deck. Now you're onboard. Batter up.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Sign in real quick. To provide a update on our brownfield program, lights blue, making sure this is coming through.
Yep.
Okay.
You're good.
So recent activity in our countywide brownfield assessment grant, if you will, just a brief recap, $500,000 to be used across DeKalb County, and through that, that grants through the, from the EPA, and BCA Environmental Consultants was the contractor awarded said, said grant. So we've been, our office has been working with them on general site, site inventory, if you will, and so to date, we have roughly 151 sites that are in that inventory across DeKalb County. Some criteria on that site, those sites are just lacking either development or interest because of its current condition. Could be a building that is, has sat vacant for a number of years, could be a building that we knew had prior potential contaminants in it, right, the old gas stations, laundromats, those types of things. So with that, again, 151 sites in, in the overall inventory. That inventory has been shared with the respective individuals in each, each community, because it is a countywide grant. So other various cities and towns have been, have seen, have seen those lists of, of the potential sites in, in their area, and where. And we're asking them to basically create kind of a, you know, top five type list of areas that, that they would like to see Phase Ones potentially done on it. So through that, the first real step in that is the site access agreement that, that grants access to BCA to do a Phase One environmental on it. Do the property history, the search, those types of things. To date, we have two, two site assessment agreements out. We have yet to receive those back from the respective property owners on that. And those are both based at this time in Waterloo. But we anticipate additional site access agreements to be put out once the communities get back with us on the identified, identified kind of top areas that they, they'd like to see on those sites. In that, the site access agreement again grants BCA access to do the Phase One in that and determine if there is a Phase Two needed. If the, if the Phase One comes back where there wasn't any potential, you know, hazardous or environmental type issue done on that property, then that typically clears it then for, then the property owner to redevelop said site or, or be able to take that site to market, if you will. And so in that, we've shared that this, that this program is available in DeKalb County. We've shared that with, you know, real estate agents, both commercial, residential, the brokers, developers, contractors to, so that they, they're aware that, that under this grant, they can get those, those Phase Ones, can participate in that. There are grant dollars available for them on that. So we've also discussed with our, you know, mayors, town managers and of the like in their respective communities, that if, you know, towns or the cities anticipate in purchasing ground for whatever purpose that may be, that again, these dollars are available to do the Phase One, to offset some of the, you know, the initial cost of what a Phase One would be. And then once, again, the findings of those Phase Ones come back, if there is a Phase Two that needs to be done, there are funds available to, to participate through the Phase Two environmental. That's where the majority of the, I believe the money will be utilized in the Phase Two because those are a little more time consuming and cumbersome on the Phase Two environmentals. But again, so two, two site access agreements are out, waiting to hear back from Town Council of Waterloo in that, in that instance. And then as we're asking the people in those, the individual communities to work with the landowners of those spaces as they have the, you know, prior relationships with those, those landowners. And we'll continue to move forward. I'd also like to provide a recap on, so not last week, the week prior was the National Brownfields Training Conference that was held in Chicago. It's held every two years as part of the grant. Myself and Colinar Office as the, the grant manager of the grant, were able to attend that conference with a lot of best practices, examples, really the utilization of how to best, best use this grant. And, you know, talking about holistic redevelopment planning, the funding and financing strategy side, how to engage with the community better for the community engagement aspect of, of the grant. And also understanding how to utilize whatever workforce development initiatives are happening locally to, to use the workforce development aspect to assist in the brownfield process. And so for instance, with some of the building trades programs that our local schools have or, you know, partnering with the likes of the Ivy Techs and like impact with some of their building trades to be able to, to help them get exposure to the brownfield program and also get additional work out of some brownfield redevelopment properties. So through that, as far as it applies again to DeKalb County with that, you know, obviously we've gone through the site identification process with the 151 sites in our inventory and then figuring out how to build the capital stacks or the funding strategy on those. So we know that, you know, there'll be, we have dollars for the, the assessment side of things on the ground, but then how do we pair financing to be able to get projects actually off the ground and redevelopment in those areas? Again, community input and the community engagement piece and tying in the, the workforce development side of it. So all that being said, we are roughly, oh, one year into the program of, and we have all the sites identified and the site assessment agreements have been out to those site owners and communities that have shown interest in participating in that. We are waiting for those site assessment agreements to come back. And then, once those come back, then BCA can go in and do the Phase Ones and Phase Twos if needed on those, on those properties. But we have, again, four years in this grant cycle to utilize those funds. And we've been, I guess, been told that once we get, really start getting traction with Phase Ones and Phase Twos being done, those dollars will move pretty fast in the sense of that if there's enough interest in projects that come to surface, we would have the ability to then reapply in the next grant cycle and then be able to continue, continue to move, move in this fashion with brownfield redevelopment. Another key piece that we don't have yet, but something worth exploring and figuring out is setting up like a revolving loan fund. It's, again, very, it's just an ideation at this point, you know, determining if there would be a revolving loan fund that we could use towards redevelopment of said brownfield type projects. Again, very early in figuring out where those funds could come from, is, you know, is it a public-private partnership, you know, with the financial institutions, community foundations, potentially local governments? And we know that there, other counties have used revolving loan funds. That, again, you know, the process of an RLF is get a, get a loan from, from that authority, use those funds and then pay that back over time, typically from a low to no interest program that sets funds, funds aside for, for redevelopment. But that's a little bit farther down the line, again, because it is a very early stage in it, but that is one potential avenue coming out of that conference that we learned about that we could, could tap into if, if the stars aligned on, on redevelopment opportunity. But.
Okay, questions, comments? Anton?
Hopefully this all moves forward so we can get those sites cleaned up and get them back to, into something productive.
How many sites do you anticipate?
So anticipation of the 151, if we could, if we could by the end of the year, I think, have, I'm ballparking like 20 to 30 sites that have shown interest, if you will, in that. And then off of that, 30, to be able to maybe dive into five to 10 Phase Twos potentially, should they need, should they need Phase Twos? But that's, that would be, it would be a goal is to have the 20 to 30 identified by the end of this year and then dig into year two with Phase Twos, which then with that, you know, that timeline aligns, we could have the ability to use those funds probably to do Phase Twos throughout the year, next year, and then just 26. So then by '27, hopefully have those funds spent down to where we could reapply. But I would, you know, use this platform and if, you know, for the folks at home or if you have a property that either you own or you're aware of that has lacked development or interest, again, there are dollars, dollars available that, that we can do, get a site, site access agreement on and, and do the Phase One and see if it needs a Phase Two. But again, we want to make it more marketable and help kind of uplift these sites.
Thank you for coming in for the update.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
I was wondering, Anton, could we get a list of those sites?
Absolutely.
The ones that are at the top of the list as far as remediation and Phase One?
Yes, we, once, once, again, our site list right now is, I would say, broad, but once, because we have the site assessments out, but once we start to get the sites that have shown interest in using that, we can put those to the top of the list and share that with you, absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Eric? All right? Have a good day.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you.
Let's do payroll. Pay the folks.
I'll make a motion to accept payroll.
Second that.
Motion second to approve payroll and additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Payroll is approved. Claims? Motion to approve claims?
The move to accept is presented, but I have some questions.
Sure.
I'll second.
Motion second, what's your questions?
Okay.
Crime, crime control, flock safety. At $12,000.
What was that account? The three?
33920. Just wondering. Information.
It is something called Flock Safety for the Sheriff's Department. It is also known as Falcon and it is their, like, software agreement. Not sure. It looks like they're cameras, so we, they must have to pay a software. Software, network, software subscription. So four of the security cameras at $3,000 each. Traffic cameras?
Under telecommunications, the City of Auburn, is 0018-000350. Is that, first, is that a monthly bill?
Is that the $6,580?
No, $11,258.
Oh, let me. You said it's City of Auburn?
Yeah.
33240-33, I mean, 000350.
33240.
Telecommunication, yeah. And beneath they have AT&amp;T, City of Auburn, T-Mobile, Verizon.
Does it say what department? That have like?
Land Commissioner General. I have it pulled up right here.
I know, but you might.
I know.
I'm trying to get to the invoice, like.
Jim, I emailed all three of you, download from, I think, what the website is for Flock Falcon. You could see what it is. I think it's this cam, traffic cam type thing, I think. But you can at least read the blurb from their website. I just sent it out. You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Trying to understand these.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I actually, well, Susan's looking for that. There's actually a website you can go to where they all are in your county. Like it actually will show you where the different cameras are. And I believe it might be shared with Auburn City.
Anything else, Jim?
I just, oops.
So $6,580 of it is the on-premise calling county IS shared software hardware. And then $4,678.60 is the monthly AES data and other services that equals together. The one.
So is that, again, that's a monthly bill?
The $4,000 part is, I was just looking to see how long it's been since we paid the service part. So we pay $46.78 and 60 cents. That's a monthly for our AES data, internet phones, things like that. Looks like the services. I am not sure. I don't know if that's, it doesn't look like we pay that monthly. I mean, we haven't yet this year. So I don't know if that is part of, like, we have to, they're switching something over. I don't understand all of it, but they're switching something over with our phone system. So I don't know. I can't answer that.
Okay. I can go ask IT.
Yep.
Okay, that's, I will do that. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Not a problem.
Okay. I have a question then. Under Sunday Medals.
Okay.
0024 subsection 22130, operating supplies. Amazon Capital Service Incorporated. 30993, Gordon Food Service, 18568. I'm just curious what those are. Wouldn't the Gordon Food be down at the next?
So Gordon Food brings food and like janitorial, household things. So the ones that's in the operating, those are cleaners.
Okay.
That were, obviously.
Toilet paper.
Obviously, they're not eating. So that's why that's in the operating.
Okay.
And then the Amazon one, that was also a supply. We needed to get some big totes for packing up residents' items and helping them get their stuff moved over.
Okay.
And the 62, there was also $62.65. That was because we also got some different sized cardboard moving boxes. Some of this stuff can be in boxes, some of this stuff need to be in a tote to try to kill anything that could be on it before it goes to a new facility. So that's what those were.
Two, two of the residents that transitioned to a different facility wanted it to be treated before they sent the stuff there. So we needed the totes to, to.
Okay, just curious. Any additional comments?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. I lost track, we got motion second.
I have Jim and Kellen.
Yep.
Okay, just making sure that wasn't from last.
Nope.
Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Claims are approved. Minutes. Just read the minutes.
Did. I will make a motion to accept minutes as presented.
Motion second to approve minutes, additional comments?
Yes. I don't know how to correct this, but in the minutes, it says that for the holiday schedule, the election years, it says every other year, but that is not correct because there will be elections on three of the next five years. It's not necessarily every other year.
Would you want me to just put it?
As a correction that it's
To
I think just put it as election years and not
On election years.
Every other year.
Okay.
I do recall that actually was discussed about the city elections being
Right.
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 Yeah. But it ends up as every, it's three out of the next five, which isn't necessarily, that's not correct.
Okay, let me
Harder to word three out of the next five, but I like Susan's wording.
Right. Well, and who knows about the next five?
Okay, so in adding do you want me to specify two election days or just adding election days on election years? Because doesn't
That's pretty good, I think.
Doesn't city fall in there?
Yeah. That would be, just so it's correct.
Yep.
Okay, let me update that before I have you sign these. And I'll get a new signature sheet ready.
I'll amend my motion to accept the
Well. Hold on, one second.
Okay, so Kellen is motioning to approve them as amended.
Well.
But Jim has another amendment too.
Okay.
Under, under the DART, the van number twenty four. It reads three dollars and fifty cents.
I'm quitting. I'm done.
I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I'm glad. Oh, that's funny, it's probably I'll look, I think it was thirty five hundred.
I, I believe it was thirty five hundred.
Okay, I just missed the zero.
I thought that should probably be corrected as well.
I appreciate it.
Reading late last night, I missed it too. Saw the comma.
We have a motion and a second.
Am I And you've amended it to
I amended it for both of them, yes.
Okay.
Now second that motion.
Okay.
The amended motion.
Thank you, Jim.
I have, I have a question and I'd like to bring Dana up, if you would. On this holiday, election day. Your office is closed.
Correct.
How many of your employees are involved in the election process?
Well, we're gonna have to see how many are gonna come in and work it, but off, I mean Karen, myself, Holly, we for sure will all be here probably at 4:00 AM. I would like to see if some of the employees would come in and go to different voting sites just to keep the flow of things going and report back to us.
So the rest are actually on holiday? Except
Yes. Correct. But some of them might sign up to work polling locations, I don't know yet. This is something we're gonna have to cross as it gets closer.
Is, can we make that a requirement, Andrew? Any, any
Make what a requirement?
That the clerk's office employees work the polls?
So
I don't know that you have that kind of control necessarily over the clerk's office.
And then the problem lies where they're already gonna get holiday pay, then they would get polling pay. How do we compensate? Do we give them comp time? That's a whole nother thing we would have to look into.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, yep.
Thanks Dana.
You're welcome.
Okay, all for a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, miscellaneous topics. Do this, we got time to do this Purdue Pharma care settlement? Susan?
Okay, so, yes, this Purdue Pharma settlement. Bill had gotten a docu-sign and at the same time I had gotten a packet in the mail with information that I didn't understand. So I sent it to Andrew and then I also had reached out to Attorney General's office, to the lady that sends us our opioid distributions to begin with. So she said there are two components to the opioid settlement with this Purdue Pharma and the members of the Sackler family. First, there's a bankruptcy proceeding. Entities that submitted a proof of claim in the bankruptcy will receive a ballot to vote on the proposed bankruptcy claim. If you vote no, then DeKalb County would not receive any money from the bankruptcy settlement. Second, there is the settlement with members of the Sackler family. Unlike our other opioid settlements, to receive this money from the settlement, the county must complete the subdivision participation form and return it by September thirtieth. That's the piece that came in the docu-sign. So we do want you commissioners to approve that and for Bill to complete that docu-sign, so we can move forward with that. Andrew and I have talked, emailed, and Andrew reached out to the Health Department. I'm not aware of us filing anything with the bankruptcy and neither is the Health Department. And in the information that we got, there wasn't a ballot form for us to vote with, so
And I don't think we get a, it sounded like we didn't get a vote if we didn't make a claim, but
Yeah.
Like if you were Fort Wayne or Indianapolis, you might have had departments put together, how much has this opioid crisis cost you as a, you know, a city or town, but I don't know that we ever had a need to develop those numbers and, you know, so I guess we should file the form to see what money can flow in our direction.
Yeah, so I think, I don't really think we're getting anything from the bankruptcy part of it, because I really don't think we submitted any claim for it. But we do want to do this opioid settlement part, because that'll just be additional dollars that will go into our opioid restricted and unrestricted funds. And the opioid committee or whoever's on that, then they will come eventually to request what they can spend it on. Or what they would like to spend it on.
I think what Susan said is accurate, it's a little confusing the way the information in forms came into us.
Yes.
But I think what Susan said is accurate, as far as I can tell.
Okay. Any comments, questions? entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the how do, do you have something I can read?
We don't really, so the docu-sign Purdue Pharma settlement form that Bill received.
Sackler family.
Yes.
What?
Oh, and Sackler family, it's like, the Purdue Pharma filed bankruptcy and the Sackler family, as I understand it, is the main owners behind it. And they agreed to divulge part of their family earnings back into the company bankruptcy.
So you're approving Bill to go ahead and sign the docu-sign for this settlement?
Yes.
Got it.
Well, I want it ordered.
I know.
Yeah, there's two components, I just wanted to make sure it covered Sackler and Purdue, so.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
So then you'll sign and then somehow it will get to me.
Because I get it, I'll sign it.
Yeah.
Third tries, charge.
I know. Those docu-signs are, are rough sometimes.
Well, they're not hard to do, it's just you get them, you have no knowledge, it's coming.
Right.
Secretly.
Right.
Nobody sees it by me when it first comes in.
And then some, and then probably most of them, you have to get a vote by the commissioner before you sign it.
Actually gonna get a vote by the commissioner.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay Dana, you are up.
I am looking to change over our collection service agency. So currently we are with Eagle Accounts. Way before my time, way before Holly's time even. We cannot find a current contract. I checked with the auditor, I even checked with Eagle Accounts. One does not exist apparently. So I would like to switch over to American Financial Credit Services. I did forward the contract to Andrew, who looked it over.
And I approved it?
Yep.
Yeah.
So at this point, I would just like to switch from Eagle to the new collection agency.
What was the cost on that, is it percentage?
Yeah, so currently with Eagle, it's a 30%, like we don't pay that, that's to the debtor. This is actually gonna be saving the debtor 3%, so they charge 27%.
And there's a statute in Indiana
Yep.
that we looked at that allows various county offices to have a collection agency, they can contract out. And the collection agency is allowed to charge the cost of collections for that, so.
And the treasurer currently uses this same collection agency.
Okay.
How long is the contract good for?
It's basically 30 days, so we can change it. Right now, I believe the way Judy, our bookkeeper, does it is she'll do it all at once at the end of the year, but we can look at it at 30 day increments, to my knowledge. Andrew, is that what you took from it?
I am working on pulling that up, but let's see if I, here we go. Just have to get the right spot on my notes. I'm thinking, yeah, 30 days prior notice, paragraph seventeen. Paragraph sixteen talks about a one year, so
Yes.
It's terminated, so that's why I was a little confused with
Right.
30 days, one year. We didn't want to have another elevator situation.
Right, right. I, and look, it says, I see that it's, I mean, it's a one year term with the ability to terminate upon 30 days' notice. So I mean, like, there's a general one year term, but occasionally you'll see contracts where you are allowed to get out for any reason at all with 30 days' notice. And then they have terms on how that, you know, if they have any collections that are ongoing, I think you still have to pay their fee or something for it if money comes in.
But does it actually say, does it automatically, like, well, just keep going every year if we don't do anything?
Yeah, page sixteen says it's effective for one year period unless otherwise terminated by either party as provided in this agreement. I think it's the 27% is probably locked in for the year and then I believe that after 30 days, we could cancel if we want to. Is that my understanding of that?
Yeah, I think you can cancel it with 30 days' notice. I'll see if I can maybe bring up the contract, but that's how I took it when I read it.
So Dana, will you set yourself a calendar reminder?
Yeah. I can do that.
So that we have time to, in case you want to change it? Because I will have no idea if you want to change.
Nope, I can calendar it on mine.
Yeah, it does say in paragraph seventeen, either party may terminate this agreement upon providing 30 days' prior written notice. So that's, that gives us more flexibility if we
I thought so, I just was, just double checking.
Yep, no, that's good.
A little confusing there.
Yeah. Most companies aren't that flexible, but it's nice that this company is. I have seen it a few times. It's not like the other contracts that are like automatically renewing if you don't, within a 30 day window, say no. So this is a better contract language that way.
All the questions I had? All the questions I had?
Okay. entertain a motion?
I've moved to accept the contract as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Everybody signs.
All right, the next thing I have is we did some annexations for the city.
The city of Garrett did an annexation and it's been a while back, I didn't realize that. Oh, this is for the council. No, it's for the city of, we just did one for redistricting the council seats in Garrett, but and now we're doing one where they annexed a portion of Garrett into the city. Just somebody's property.
So we need to establish new precincts?
I'm just gonna move them into Kaiser Two.
Got it.
Not gonna
You're just adding.
I'm just adding.
Thank you.
Miss Parso is on County Road forty eight, is that correct?
Yeah, it's Crider.
Crider, yeah. Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second on the floor, any additional comments, questions? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And Susan, you'll just send me the signed contract?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Okra extension letter. I think this is for the sewer district, St. Joe.
It is. By the way, did you guys all get the email I sent you about the groundbreaking or some?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just reminded me, okay. So yes, so Mike Klein Peter from Klein Peter Consulting. He said, due to all the delays at the start of the project, we are running into Okra deadlines already. Okra only allows for us to ask for a maximum of six months at a time. I believe we already did one of these. So now we're getting close to that six months, so we have to do another six month extension so we can keep going with the project. And this is only for Bill to sign and I'll send it back.
I don't see any problem with it from the legal side, I think it's something that will hopefully allow it to stay open long enough for them to use the funds on the project.
Yeah. If they, we don't do this, the funds could be withdrawn.
The funds are very helpful since they're, you know.
Increase everybody else's rate if we lose the Okra funds on it too, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion if you're accepting motions.
I'll second that.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, I will sign. County Treasurers monthly report acceptance for July.
So Jim, this, I'm gonna just explain this because you were on vacation the first time I did this. It was brought to my attention that the treasurer does a monthly report, which they always have and they've always submitted it to my office. They also send it to the state. However, code says that the auditor is supposed to give this to the Board of Finance, which is you guys. The commissioners are supposed to approve that they've acknowledged receipt that they got it. And then I, as the auditor, have to also submit this to the state. I did ask the state why the auditor had to submit a treasurer's report and they said because statute says so. So I did the first six months at one time, so that we're good for 2025. So now each month, I will scan this little blue sheet in for you guys to acknowledge receipt that I gave it to you and then we'll be compliant for the state. But there's nothing to sign, nothing else to do. I did ask the state what I needed to have in case somebody asked me if I gave this to you guys. And their answer was there is no requirement to have proof.
So we don't even have to motion it or anything to accept it?
I just want, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and have you just acknowledge, yeah, motion to acknowledge receipt of it.
Then it's in the, then it's in the record.
Yeah.
And it's-
It's in the packet.
Okay.
I think it's crazy, but here we are.
And I don't know how you, as commissioners, are supposed to understand all the detailed numbers either, I don't. We're just that smart.
Okay, motion to acknowledge.
So, so move to accept the report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. County Home.
Yes.
July, outline report.
Yes, I did send just the report part in the big packet, and then I emailed you guys all the backup last night once I got everything scanned in. This is again acknowledging that you received this report, and then the three of you need to sign at this bottom corner on the front.
So move that we accept the report as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
These are the minutes with the changes.
One more.
Airmail. Okay. Travel policy is taken care of. We jump on down to concert discussion.
I wasn't sure where we ended with this, and I was thinking that we haven't made a decision, and we still need to discuss.
Did not make a decision.
Okay. I remembered something. And I don't know if you're ready to talk about it. If not, we can wait till the next meeting.
No, we got a little time.
I think we should make a definitive answer, so at least, you know, Josh, I believe is his name, knows what's going on. We should not leave him hanging in limbo. Do you have anything additional, Andrew?
Uh, I did not have anything additional. I'm trying to remember what, if there was anything particular that I was supposed to look at on there, but.
Probably not.
I, I just, I know that I agree that if you have, so as I understand the First Amendment law on it, if you open up any area for public, like, as a public platform to have something, an open public platform, then you cannot discriminate on the content of what's being done there. So if you open it up for this group, you've got to allow this group that you may strongly disagree with their ideas on. You don't have to make anything a public forum, but if you do make it a public forum, then you're opening yourselves up for lawsuits if you want to discriminate on one type of thing versus another. As we know, there may be groups that are, that you're strongly against, or that even the county might be against their perspective.
If they're just playing music, would that be considered a public, I mean, they're just, I mean, they're not here to make a political statement. They're not here to, they're just playing music, so I mean, would that be anything different than?
I'm not 100% on that. I could reach out to, there's a couple of different organizations that do deep dives into this, and I could reach out to them to ask them or see if they'd be willing to give a legal opinion on that. I mean, there's some detailed federal cases on all of this, and I haven't had to do that kind of a deep, a deep dive myself, and it wouldn't be worth it probably for you guys to, or for me to try to research all of those nuances myself, but I could reach out to organizations that have synthesized all that federal research. There's different ones on, you know, both sides of the political spectrum, but I could certainly reach out and see about the music side.
It seems like this isn't a political statement, it's a musical presentation.
Is, okay, so is it because it's not during hours, is that where our issue is falling? Because we had the mu, we had the music a couple, multiple years, like, at Christmas time for an hour or so. They just played, and we all kept working. We'd go out and look at the rotunda a little bit and then keep working, and-
We did do that.
I don't recall.
Music, I, I understand what you're saying there, that music is, I mean, you, you can play music through your sound system-
It's entertainment.
During the day, entertainment, whatever.
It's not a public, it's not a public comment necessarily, or a public opinion, or an opinion. It's entertainment.
Then what if you have a church or synagogue come in and do it? I mean, then, then there may be pursuing their opinions on it, which is not necessarily bad, but then. So, I, I mean, I could delve into it here in the next couple of weeks and report back to you what I can find out. I mean, I could carefully do it without trying to open up any can of worms or anything.
I'm just nervous because we, we don't allow public comment anymore on the public square on our yard anymore because of issues we've had in the past. I don't want that to open up again to the inside of the courthouse, so.
But music, I can see if there's some limited exception for concerts or music.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's a, I think there's a difference between it two, just to make sure we're legally covered. I don't want to have a group coming in later and be like, hey, I want to come now to something.
I think I can get some information on that without having any issues.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like many towns play Christmas music.
Yeah.
Isn't this basically the same thing?
For myself, clarification would be.
Yeah.
I-
Oh, I agree. I'm just making-
I'll try to dig into that, Eric.
I want to make the right decision.
Yeah, I'm just making the comments, the observation.
It'd be awesome for them to come in, but let's just make sure we're covering, not have another group coming in later that causes some issues.
Okay, I'll, I'll dig in and see what research I can do on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Woodlands and Lakes.
So I was gonna try to reach out to them. I did not get a chance to. My oldest went to, moved into college yesterday, been pretty busy with that all week and a few other things, so I have not gotten a chance to reach out to him and see, so I'd like to put that on hold until next meeting, if you don't mind.
Hey, Jim.
I was ready to make a decision, but I can wait for two weeks.
Do, are you familiar with this?
I am.
Because I don't think, was Jim here the first time we talked about this? I don't remember if Jim was on vacation the first time we talked about this.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
I just wanted to get some more information. I wanted to talk to them about it a little bit. That's all. I just hadn't got a chance to do it. If you guys want to make a decision, that's you two.
I, this is now one of those donating to something that the taxpayer has no say in. And I was just hesitant to make any more donations of any kind to nonprofits. That, that's a donation by the taxpayer. It's a forced donation. I'm not sure that's the proper thing to do. I would, I want to put it to bed. I'll make, you want to make the motion, Jim?
Can't make a negative motion. I would.
You can't, I mean, you can say I move to decline to donate money?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be my motion.
I was second?
You go ahead. You're second. Yeah, I'll second it. I didn't know if you were second.
Motion second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good old Humane Shelter contract.
Yes. So, I know I had, Dave Rodecap had reached out to me, I think, last week and asked. He hadn't received money yet, but then I emailed Susan and got the information back, and then passed it to Dave Rodecap that money would be coming, that it's been approved, and checks will be cut maybe today. I'm trying to remember when.
It was in claims.
But then it's up to you three to discuss what you want the contract to look like for next year.
And for transparency, there were two, so we did July's and August today.
It sounds like the Humane Shelter has restarted work with the Sheriff's Department, is what we understood, which is why all of this, you know, is being discussed and, and why the checks are restarted. Everybody, we're kind of re-getting the contract going on both sides, the money from the county and the work from the Humane Shelter, but that leaves open the big question of what do you want to do next year?
Well, I've reached out to Dave Rodecap, and I'm actually, it's been several emails back and forth. We have not met personally yet, which is what I want to do, to get this contract started. And at this point, it's in his ballpark to give me dates when we can meet. And that's, I'm, I'm just, I've waited at least 10 days now for him to respond. I'm just waiting for dates.
Okay.
Where we can meet and start with the contract. So that, again, it's in his ballpark.
Would you further under-table it for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to table that.
Let's table it and give Jim a chance to make contact.
So how about, I will just hold on to it and wait until you tell me we're ready to bring it back?
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
That'll work.
Because after, yeah.
We got some time.
After we get it written, I certainly want Andrew to give his stamp of approval before I-
Right.
Bring it to the, the other two gentlemen.
Okay, so I'll just wait to hear from you, and then we'll add it back.
And probably would help to have Brian Humbarger and the Sheriff's Office to have input on it as well, I would think.
Yes.
I do have-
We don't need a motion to table it, do we?
No.
No.
Well, it was just a discussion.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of things that I didn't get put on, if you wanted me, or if you want to go to break. I'm sorry. I didn't realize how close I was.
Depends on how long they are.
We can wait.
Are you here for the liquor license?
Wait? Okay.
Bill, the, the gentleman here is for the, the liquor license I got sent in.
Oh, that is one.
I didn't know. Maybe you can do that, so that way he's not having to wait around any longer.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
Thank you, Bill. Let me pull that up here.
Farm Festival?
Yes. You want to come up to the thing? Are you the one that reached out to me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, got it.
Let me just pull this up. Did you put on a miscellaneous?
It-
The catering, there it is.
It was after I had everything posted, so that was one thing I don't have listed.
Can you give your name and address, please?
Yep, my name is Adam Kugler, and I reside at 104 Old Bog Road in Avila, Indiana.
If you just want to go to tell, just say what you told me on the phone.
Yep, absolutely. So I'm opening a business in Avila. It's called The Birdie Barn LLC. It's a golf simulator business, and we received a 210-1 liquor license, three-way liquor license. Also received a catering permit that we're able to cater our license as well. So North Folk Farms, which is out on County Road 43, got ahold of us and would like for us to, during their fall season, to cater ready-to-drink beverages, adult beverages, so. They have a building for us set up per the Indiana Alcohol and Tobacco Commission. They require us, because we're catering from Noble County to DeKalb County, and you're less than 150,000, that we have to get permission from you guys to make sure we're okay to do that.
I had gotten your voicemail, by the way, and I didn't have-
Oh, you're fine.
The idea how to answer it.
I, you're, yep, no worries. I got Helen on the phone, so.
Okay.
She answered all my questions. Thank you, though.
He reached out to me. I told him he needed to come here, be present, so we can ask him any questions. I think a good idea. I mean, he's got a liquor license. He just needs to be able to have our permission to go to the Free Fall Fair to serve there. I mean, he's following all the alcohol and tobacco rules and regulations, so.
Yep.
Okay, I'll take a train and motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll move second.
Motion second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Carries.
Thank you for coming.
Do you want the letter now?
Yeah.
You're up to it.
I need it first.
I know.
I mean, if, if you want to stay around a minute.
I'll sit around and go talk to Dana.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bill, for letting me come up and talk.
Thanks for picking it up.
And thanks for getting that on, Susan, getting that printed. Appreciate it.
Okay, in that case, take a break.
Sounds good.
So that was his error. He apologizes. So I've got, I printed off two copies. That way Susan could just have one. It's the same as what we signed last time, except with them corrections. So if I could have you guys sign these and I resubmit back to him.
I'm gonna do that one, Andrew. We do this one? Does that one become void then?
Well, this had been submitted in, Dot, so it should be-
Oh, he hasn't submitted that one, okay.
Because he found his errors. Right.
This was the County Route 56?
Yes.
Yep.
We probably still need a motion to accept the new contract.
Right.
So I so move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor saying if I'd be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
One for me and one for Ben.
Yeah, I'll give him.
Oh, if you guys can go ahead and sign that one, then we both can have one. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hopefully he's got that one correct. I believe so. So then I hear Dottie was in this morning and talked to you guys briefly on ADA and Title VI. So she's done good at that. Appreciate Dottie's help with that. She's, she has done a lot to keep up on that and keep us current. Title VI is, there's a lot to that. And ADA, it's a living document. It always changes. So we've worked good with that over the years. We haven't done a whole lot in the last few years. The county's sitting relatively pretty good with ADA. We do have a few of our bridges. It's got a sidewalk. There's a drop. There's actually one of them here in Auburn, but that's scheduled within the next five years for rehab. And we'll look at those at that point. To go in and do the deck repair, or excuse me, the sidewalk repairs on a bridge is quite extensive from how the sidewalks poured and the decks poured. So the only thing you can do is really go in and grind them at an angle, take the lip out. Most of them, what I've seen, hasn't been that bad to worry about. A lot of them was on the county-owned properties and buildings. That's why we started to include Larry into that meeting as well, because he's over the buildings and maintenance. And I told Larry I'd also help him going forward if he had questions or needed help with that on what needs replaced. And I told Larry I'd also help him going forward if he had questions or needed help with that on what needs replaced or stuff. But that did bring up another topic that I've talked to prior commissioners about. I haven't, Bill's, I've talked to him about it before, prior commissioners. Jim and Kellen haven't. One of the biggest areas we have is in the Spencerville area, it's an unincorporated town, so therefore it falls under county's jurisdiction. There's bits and pieces of sidewalks in there. So, there's really not a, there's not a whole run of a sidewalk anywhere in the town. I went through there years ago and looked at that, was going to try to update some and do some replacements in there. There's so many, there's going to be a lot of trees, there's a lot of sidewalks right up against homes. There's a lot of people that's parking on top where the sidewalk would be. So, there's going to be a pretty substantial change in the community to go down through there and then incorporate a sidewalk. I'm assuming some will want it, some won't. But my recommendation at that point, and still is at this point, if you guys want to pursue with that, we really need to have that all engineered in there. That way, we can have the right-of-ways staked, we can have the property lines staked and know for sure where we're at within the easements. And then also, we're going to have to pay attention to drainage, because when we go through and put a sidewalk in, sometimes we may obstruct drainage, or we'll be accused of obstructing drainage. I've been through that in the past. I don't know if that's something you guys want me to pursue with, with reaching out to a firm and looking at this. You know, originally, I thought about reaching out to Spencerville Community and see if they even wanted sidewalks, maybe just eliminate what's there. But ADA complacency and sidewalks is law. Though, I don't know if the majority vote would overrule the law. Because if one person comes in, that's all it would take. That would, I guess that would be a question for legal on his opinion of that. I'm just not so sure we could really do that, because ADA complacency is law. And like I said, it only takes one complaint to start it, if we got rid of it over there and didn't update it. State Road One through Spencerville, they did put ADA corners in, sidewalks to nowhere.
Just corners.
Just the corners. That's how the law's written, unfortunately.
I've been in Texas, and you'll have a road in the middle of nowhere that has the ADA compliance, yeah. I mean, it's cornfield everywhere with their four sidewalk states.
But.
It is what it is.
Down the state right-of-ways, that would ultimately be up to the homeowners or the state to do that. All the side streets would be on the county to do. So, we wouldn't do anything down State Road One. So, I just.
Since we're responsible for it, wouldn't, what's your thoughts, Andrew?
Newville is not reported in our ADA transition plan, so when I don't recall, to be honest with you, I'd have to go over there and drive it, I don't recall any being there. So, if there's none there, you're not required. No, because like when you go out in our new addition, Diamond Lake Estates, there's no sidewalks out there. They was never put in.
So, okay, I might have missed this. You said that unincorporated portions of Spencerville or all of Spencerville?
All of Spencerville is unincorporated, right. So, therefore, it falls under the county's jurisdiction.
Got it, okay, sorry.
Are sporadic, there's pieces. You really got to look for them. I mean, there's, they're covered over with grass and go, there's just pieces here and there.
Yeah.
Well, as far as our part, there is visible sidewalks, there's pieces of it. Yes. At some point, for our ADA transition plan, it's in there to update and repair or replace. And that's why I brought up like a community meeting to see if that's what they would want, because of the way people's lifestyles are, how close they are to the homes, which we could maybe move that, because so many of these people's parking out where the sidewalks would be. If we put new sidewalks in, then we'll have to have an ordinance in on keeping the sidewalks clear, not parking on it, so on. So, it's going to. And we could do that, as long as. Yes, that's. Which, that's where it's been. Yes.
Yes. You could, you could leave it.
I tried to be discreet about that.
Very good. So, you could leave it more, you know, ambiguous as to, in a sense, have it be a future planned action. I don't, I think if you start taking any steps, then you're, you'd probably complete the process once you start it.
No, but it's going to be a timeframe, so like if, if we was to make a step, the first step would be the engineering of it.
Right.
And then going forward, we could say, okay, well, we're going to start, I'm just going to throw twenty twenty-eight, we'll do a block.
Well, and it sounds like.
You're too down, do another block, I mean, it's all.
It sounds like it could be a pretty expensive process.
Oh, it's going to be, yes. If, if we pursue with it, 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 there's nothing cheap about it, no.
It could be fifty to a hundred thousand just to engineer it.
Easily, yes.
And then, plus the cost of it.
Yes, there's going to be survey and everything else included with that.
Oh, boy. Who enforces the ADA compliance?
That's on you guys. And Dottie's just the coordinator, so I mean, it's up to you guys to help fund it. That's why you appointed Dottie for.
Who enforces it, though, if we don't comply? Is it the state?
It will be a.
I think private lawsuits, yeah, private citizens can file suit.
And then ours, our ADA transition plan also gets approved by the state. So, at some point, if we're not doing anything, they may.
I guess the point I'm trying to make, the state's not doing anything other than the corners.
Well, yes and no, there's areas that they are, I'm sure. But it's just like us, I mean, we've only got a limited amount of funds and X amount of, you know, the, the state roads go through a lot of towns and cities. So, they, they've ultimately got a lot more responsibility on that than what we do.
Well, that's what we do not here.
Right.
Hate.
Right.
But for some reason, they haven't started to put in any sidewalks in along State Road One right now in Spencerville. They haven't done it themselves, except for the corners.
At this point, correct. But there's been a lot of area, they're going through Butler, down six now, and they went through one, they've done a lot of sidewalks. They has.
I think they did Saint Joe, maybe, with new sidewalks in there.
Yep, they did, when they went down through there, yep. Like I said, this ain't, we don't have to act on it, I just wanted to bring it up, because I need to and to work towards that for some of our projects, just to stay compliancy that we are working towards it. We do have some improvements that's happened. You know, the Auburn-Warloo Trail was one, that was rehabbed and updated. We did decentralized crossing for the school and got the Fliers out there, we did that one. The Highway Department on Nensley was at some deficiencies. Now, we've got the new highway location, it's all ADA compliance. You guys did the north side of the courthouse here and got the ramp in and got that. So, I mean, we've done progressions in the last several years, plus we've done eleven A, we did a lot of repairs out there. Which year we did that, twenty, maybe? We hired, I hired that done at Henderson, go out there and make a lot of repairs and raises and lowers sidewalks and some ADA compliance corners. As I said, as far as out in the rural areas, we don't hardly have any sidewalks. But we don't have a lot in our transition plan. Spencerville's the big one, and then the county buildings.
Should we get quotes or bids on engineering that as a first step?
I mean, we can ask for ballpark. They, most consultants don't want to bid. They can give you a ballpark what it would be.
One concern I would have is, so let's say that the county does this, you'd end up then having sidewalks on all the side streets, but not on the main street where probably the biggest need would be.
But that's.
Because that's the state, it's outside of a jurisdiction, so it's almost.
I would imagine, I can't speak for the state, but if we did stuff coming to it, I imagine they would probably follow suit at some point in the near future.
I'm just suggesting that maybe, you know, you, they could, you as commissioners could decide to wait until the state.
Yeah.
Leads on that, because everybody's going to want to flow to maybe Dollar General or in and out of town on a, you know, on bikes or walking or something, and if the main road doesn't have a sidewalk, I don't know. I mean, it's entirely up to you.
I agree, I agree, we should follow the state.
It's just a thought, I mean, if there's liability issue, it's not going to change from today to tomorrow necessarily.
Maybe get the engineering, but then just see when the state starts putting actual sidewalks in and start doing the expense of actually doing that, connecting with them. But at least have an idea of what it's going to look like and have that ready to go, I think, would be showing that we are working towards the ADA. They say, hey, we're kind of waiting for the state to see where they're going to put theirs ads, we can connect properly with theirs.
Yeah. I mean, it's been a while since, I don't remember when we brought it up last, it's been a while.
Why don't you give us some, and I'll say quotes on engineering? You agree?
Yeah, I agree.
I think the engineering, I think I'm fine with, but to actually start putting them in, I would probably wait till the state comes in, because I don't want to have it not match up.
Yeah.
And all that stuff, and then we're spending more money.
Till the state does it.
Yeah.
Okay.
How much we got in that fund, ADA? Sixty? Maybe?
That may be something you want to look at amending with Dottie as well, then, because the ADA transition plan currently states that you'll put twenty-five thousand annually in to that fund. That's what's, well, no, but in that account for ADA.
Yeah, what he's saying, it should, it needs to be, it's supposed to be added to twenty-five thousand every year. Right?
That's the way it read, yeah, so I don't know if it just meant twenty, make sure you have twenty-five thousand in each year. The way I read it, you're going to add twenty-five thousand annually to a, the fund towards ADA complacency.
But what I hear Susan saying is there is no fund, it's just an allocated portion each year in your budget, right? That's what you're saying?
We just might want to.
Unbuilding up.
Might want to look into that and make sure. Okay.
Okay. If you have any questions, just, I can look at the statute too, if you need me to.
Because you know how that lawyer's interpretation is.
What are you saying about lawyers or fans?
Saying a word. Saying a word.
We're the glue that holds society together.
I just know how different interpretations can be one way or another, so just to. Okay, well, I'll, I'll move forward on seeing what we can do and.
It's a ballpark idea, kind of.
Yeah, it's, you know, they would have to decide whether we would do a sidewalk down one side of the road or both sides of the road, or. You know. Yeah, there's some stuff to determine, and like I said, it wouldn't have to all be done. I mean, it, it could be a several-year process, you know.
When we could start out with the road, the ones coming off the state.
Right.
And go vertically off of those, down the side streets, and then maybe the crossovers last. Something like that. Okay, anything else, Ben?
Nope, I believe that's all I had today. Unless you guys have anything else for me.
Anything for Ben, anyone?
All good?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Have a good week.
I hope so, you do the same.
Okay, it looks like we're down to one item on the discussion, commissioner meetings.
And I do, I have one more that's not on there.
Okay, what you got?
That one, okay, so, the nine-nine-one-one services in digital contract agreement. I don't know, and this might be an under question, I don't know if we need to do a formal approval because that doc you signed got signed without the term automatic renewal being changed? Or, I don't know what to do.
Though, I think we do need to have a motion to.
So.
Will they send us a new agreement with that amended language and it to sign?
Brian doesn't know, he's asking. We were waiting for that, but it, it got signed.
I mean, if the contract got.
On the eighth, on July eighth.
Language, then it'd be a good idea to get a new contract to sign. I think it's just a matter of getting a different contract to sign, maybe?
Maybe, but I didn't know to cover Bill.
Right.
If they at least need to do a motion, because he signed this one.
Has it been sent to the others, it has been sent to the other side, because it's the doc you signed, so once he signed it, it got signed.
Yeah. And then Brian is waiting on, to find out if they're going to, if they will agree to amend it or not.
Well, I guess you can, I mean, once it's signed, you created a binding contract, arguably. It's just that one term that needs to be changed. I think we need to find out if they're going to change it, and if, I mean, you can vote to rescind it, but I don't know that legally that rescinds it, because you've already signed it, binding contract.
But we don't even have a motion approving this one at all.
Oh, really?
That's what I'm asking, because at that meeting, we were going to wait, but then on the eighth.
They sent the contract anyway or something?
Automatic, not automatically, but accidentally got signed by Bill on the eighth, so. They think that this is approved, but we don't have an actual.
Officially approved it yet.
Correct, we were waiting for a different term.
Okay, then maybe do a motion to let them know that that got signed by mistake?
I just want to make sure that.
Whatever you guys want to do on that, I mean.
The commissioners are covered.
You could, yeah. I mean, if you want to approve the actual contract, the way it is, without the extra term.
I guess my question is, do we need that? Do we need a motion since it was signed? Do we need a motion that approved him already to sign this?
I think so, yes, I think so, yes. I think it would be good to clear that up, because, yeah, just to confirm, hey, it was already signed, but we still approve it or.
I think that was. Original intent, somehow it got missed.
So, we will, so how about we do a motion to formally approve the original agreement with the knowledge you're still waiting for the amended term?
It's a little, yeah, it's a little awkward, but at least we get something on the record. Approving it? I mean, it's, probably your only option is to have a motion approving it with the requested change too, but, or saying that you want to notify them that it got signed by mistake and.
What was the thing that we wanted to change in it again? Because I know we agreed on everything, but it was like one thing, wasn't it?
The term was.
Automatic renewal.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was the renewal part, I was trying to remember.
It's got an automatic renewal.
Because it's a five-year.
Not in favor of.
Yeah, it's a five-year, year with an automatic renewal.
Because it's what, a five-year contract, correct?
Yeah.
It's possible none of us will be here.
Right.
And, you know, the new commissioners won't have any knowledge of the contract until it automatically renews. That's not, that's not good public policy, in my mind.
So, I mean, I think you either need to notify them that it got signed by mistake, rectify that until we get a new agreement signed, or approve it and, because I mean, with it being signed, you, you've agreed to the five-year automatic renewal and all that stuff, the way it's signed now. But because it was signed without an official vote, there was a discussion that you kind of approved going with this company, but not that automatic renewal period. So, there, there's no super clean way of dealing with it.
So, how about?
You have to decide.
I'm starting to type, how about approve the original agreement signed on seven eight with a five-year contract that automatically renewed and notify in digital the agreement was signed by mistake and the Cal County would like an amended agreement to remove the automatic renewal?
Kind of goes both ways on it, and I guess, I mean, until we find out whether they'll amend the agreement, we have to. Kind of goes both ways on it. And I guess, I mean, until we find out whether they'll amend the agreement, we have to figure that out before you know what you. Okay. But if you're saying that it was signed by mistake, you're approving the, you're approving the. Are you approving with the approval that you said there, are you approving the agreement that was signed? Or you're not? You're just approving that they're approving to go forward with the deal.
I'm attempting to have approval so that Bill is covered.
Okay.
With the signature.
Yeah.
And then also allow us to notify them that this was accidentally done with.
Okay. I'm okay with that. That's a way to try to cover both. Yeah, maybe a good way to try to cover both ways, both sides of it as best we can.
Do you have that in writing now?
Almost.
Almost.
Because I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Because this is the sort of situation where you kind of do want to go with this company.
Yeah, the only thing was, that's why I was double checking because it was just the renewal and that's, we really need to come up with some sort of system in place to, with these contracts to make sure that as we transition in and out, we get new commissioners, that these don't get missed, kind of like the Otis thing that we got missed.
Yep.
That.
Almost needs like somebody to be in charge of an Excel spreadsheet on all the open contracts.
Yeah, something needs to be so that way, you know, ahead of time that if we want to cancel these things.
My office is required to upload every single contract that we have into Gateway. So the only thing that I can come up with because it's. I don't feel that I should have to be responsible for every department's agreements. However, it's coming down to that. So the only thing I can think of, and I've already set a calendar reminder, is that before the end of each year, I can go in and see which contracts are set to expire and get those all pulled out so we know when they're going to expire for the upcoming year.
And then look at the language of, this one might be thirty days ahead. Occasionally, there's ninety days ahead.
Right.
In the Xerox contract, it was like within the ninety to a hundred day, a hundred and twenty day window. That's real specific to try to capture people.
And that's a, that is a huge project because then we're contacting, does that mean then we contact each individual department and say, well, this is expiring, are you wanting to do X?
I don't think so. I think I'm going to put them together and provide them to the commissioners because the commissioners are supposed to be responsible for all the contracts and agreements. So I'm just going to be like, okay, guys, these are the ones that are going to be expiring.
I agree with that. I think it should come to let us know, like, these are the ones we need to look at.
The contacting of the departments.
I agree with that. I agree that if you can get us to let us know which ones are expiring.
I know, but.
Yeah, but it, yeah, it always has to be.
I do not feel that that is.
No, the commissioners are in charge of contracts.
Responsibility to go through each one and.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
I think you just, if you give us a heads up of, hey, these are the ones expiring this year, then it's something we can look at as we go forward because we're in charge of contracts for the county.
Yeah.
And they're all on Gateway, so anybody can go in and look at them all the time. We're trying to update all the fields and get it a little more user friendly, but they are all, we have to upload them. That is my requirement to upload them.
So every time a contract gets signed here, you have to upload it.
And it's attached. So like.
Oh, a copy's attached.
It's not just going to say Xerox expires tomorrow. It will have the document attached to it so you can see it.
And when you upload it, you're going to put in like expiration, like when it's renewed? Is that part of the program? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, I've never.
It allows you to do that then.
It does now. It didn't originally, so my office is working on going back into every single one and adding all those dates in there. So it's not, it's not complete as of right today, but they're all in there.
That'll be nice from them, yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Can I add something real quick? As if this water isn't already muddied within digital, Brian just said that they are okay with changing the wording to include that they must reach out a hundred and twenty days before the end of the contract to discuss the renewal or termination. He's waiting for the amendment, which he hasn't received, but they are okay with that.
Oh, in digital is okay with that? Oh, that's good.
So I'm guessing that you're going to probably get another docu-sign. If they're going to do an amendment, I'm sure it's going to come through docu-sign again.
Then maybe we should. Yeah, okay. So that'll have to be voted on again then.
So, um, okay.
With the new language.
So, okay, so this first one, approving the signature on seven-eight with five-year contract that automatically renewed and notify in digital that it was an error and would like to have the automatic renewal removed and amended agreement sent that shows the removal of automatic renewal. Okay, so who motioned that? Jim?
No, I motioned. I motioned it. Jim's second.
Okay, so.
So then we can just bring it up as a new issue once they send the new contract.
Or can they make another motion saying that they approve Bill to sign the amended agreement?
Then, I think they, I think they could, but let's, let's have a vote on this motion.
Yes, yeah, that's what I was.
Covers everything that's already happened.
Yeah.
Let's do that first.
Okay.
Here are your motion. A second. Additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, second motion.
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we allow Bill to make the signature on docu-sign with the amended agreement as per the hundred and twenty day notice of cancellation.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments? Comments in the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Very good.
Motion carries. Anything else? Last item, commissioners' meeting. Comments? I've got a few. I just had an example of why we should be meeting more often, weekly. Doing the business of the voting public of the citizens of this county, I think we're lapsed. I think we've had some communication gaps. One thing that really bothered me last week, and I don't know why, if I missed it, the hearings with the code enforcement was not in the packet that I found. And kind of went into that blindsided. What was that about? Why was, why was it in the packet?
That particular one was not in the packet because the packets were too large that I could not send them electronically to you guys. I tried. I tried multiple different ways. I tried to zip them. I tried multiple ways and it, it wouldn't let me send them to you in email.
Going forward, if you got to put it in the mail, if you got to hand deliver it, there'd be no more hearings without notice to the commissioners. You got to have those in the packet.
I kind of agree with Bill a little bit on that, that, I mean, with him making sure, but I didn't know it was going to be a hearing. Is that something that's going to happen continuously with these as they come forward? Is that, I thought we were just going to have a.
Necessarily. I mean, I think I knew that there was maybe one hearing. I didn't know about the status and hearing.
I'm trying to figure that out because I don't remember, I don't remember there actually being hearings. I thought when code compliance came, they were coming to tell you, hey, this property hasn't done blah, blah, I've sent three letters, yada, yada, yada. And that it was an invitation for the people to come so that you guys could decide, want to give them a little bit more time or if you didn't want to give them a little bit more time. I personally didn't know that there were hearings either.
So the hearing process, so you can do a couple of things, and I think this is maybe where there's perhaps a little bit of confusion. You as commissioners can bring someone in to have an opportunity to give their side of the story informally to try to work it through, and I think you guys have done that in the past, or commissioners as a group have.
I thought that's how, I think, I'm not speaking for Bill, but that's how I thought that was going to go. And so when the hearing came, I was kind of.
But if it's a hearing.
Blindsided a little bit too. I was kind of like, oh, okay.
I was surprised a little bit myself, but when there's a hearing, then you to some extent have to have people under oath and testifying about things and it can be used against them in a court process later. And they have an official right to show up and give their side of the story in an official hearing setting. So I think we need to decide when someone comes in, is it a time just to informally talk with the commissioners or is this an official hearing? And I think.
And Jace was also not, he, I mean, he's done a few. He was really not even sure what he was supposed to be asking you guys. That's why when Attorney Cruz was like, well, you're wanting to ask if you guys want to go forward with a lawsuit or whatever. Yeah, so I think we were all confused all over, but.
Maybe they should try to pass things.
Chris just messaged Jody and he's going to head over here to discuss this.
They could try to communicate with me and I could communicate then with you as commissioners or.
I, I, I'm speaking for myself, but I would like to know if we're going to have an actual hearing versus an, I thought it was an informal update. They're going to kind of say their side. We're going to kind of have.
And I'm fine with informal updates, but if it's called a hearing, then I got to go through certain steps and up into it.
And I don't mind having a hearing if that's, because that way we can help it, but I think, I think we're all, we're kind of like.
But if I knew, if I really knew that that's what was going to happen, I would have had a lot more time planned for that section.
I don't think there's anybody to blame here. I think it was just kind of one of those, we never really had it before and I don't think we all kind of knew what was going on. I mean, what's your thoughts, Jim, I guess?
Well, yeah.
That brings me back to my point of the connection between the commissioners and the auditor and our lawyer on a weekly basis is in my mind a must. And another, another situation we had, purchase truck for the highway. We did that with consensus. We never officially approved it in front of those cameras, in front of the people of this county. And that's not right. That's not going to happen again. We're going to have a vote on these purchases. That was what, fifty thousand dollars we spent?
What is it again that you were talking about? What were you talking about? What's?
The purchase of the highway truck.
Oh, the highway truck.
Was never approved in public session.
He's, I thought he sat right here.
Back for approval?
No, it was never voted on. We give him a consensus because he, he talked to me about getting, because the guy won his money sooner than later. He got, he talked to you.
Was that the marketplace thing he bought? Did he buy that off marketplace?
I don't know where he bought it. No, where it might have been.
It was, I think it was the marketplace. He sat here and we asked about it. He said if he could take some of his funds from something instead of buying the trailer. I think he was going to buy the truck instead.
The truck, looking at the trailer.
I guess I thought it was approved because he had the money. I'd have to look back.
I thought we did approve. I thought we did approve.
It doesn't matter whether he's got the money or not. It needs to be approved by vote.
I'll look that up, but I, I thought that, that's what.
We did approve it.
Did.
We didn't, we didn't do a motion. We didn't do a second. We didn't do public comment.
My question is, on the public hearing, don't we have to give legal notice of a certain amount of time for the people? So.
For hearings on their claims, you're talking about, or the county has a public nuisance and so forth?
Yeah.
There has to be notice. That's one thing that I had asked Jace was, where is the notice to the people of the public hearing or the certified mail copies or whatever? That may have been something that he was unsure of at the time too.
He does those. All of his, all of the notices that he sends are all sent certified mail.
And I think there were notices.
Yeah.
Done to the people with plenty of time of this being a hearing on their claim, like Satterson, I think, got a notice and whoever the other person was got a notice. But you're right, they have to get a notice ahead of time or they don't have to show up.
Are you asking about the public being noticed, Jim?
No, I'm asking about the person themselves, yeah.
Yeah, that's why they came because they were noticed that it would be discussed with you guys at such and such date.
Yeah, they all got notice from Jace. I was just asking him about the certified mail of it. Probably was on his computer, but not there in the paper file.
Right.
Mr. Chris?
Take a moment to breathe.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank God we livestreamed. Listen in and they'd be like, do I need to come over? So the ordinance doesn't require the commissioners to even hear any of the cases. We do that so that one person isn't making the determination that a property needs abated if they haven't done the work to abate. So we bring it to you guys as a courtesy and as a, another step, I guess, an added in step to make sure that you guys are okay with abating a property if it needs to be abated, which requires it to go to court, which is what we do.
But we don't have that step in the ordinance now that come to us.
Correct.
So who makes that determination per the ordinance? Code compliance?
At what?
If, to abate it.
Correct. Yep, yep.
And they would contact.
You.
He is the county attorney to file a suit, but I wouldn't file the suit anyway until I'm authorized by the commissioners to do it because you're my lion on this.
Which maybe we need to relook at the ordinance then and, and add that in there. Technically, it just says the code enforcement official can have the attorney go through that process.
But I wouldn't want to file suit for obvious reasons without you three having input at a public meeting on a Monday at some point.
I've done that too, Chris. I've done that before. Sorry.
We've all done it.
I feel like it should be in the ordinance and in front of the commissioners anyways before.
You thought it was or you think it should be?
It should be. I think it should be that it comes in front of us. I don't think the code compliance should have the power to abate anybody's property without having it come in front of us. I mean, we're elected officials on it.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't feel comfortable just having a code enforcement officer come and say, hey, we'll file suit on these five people.
Yeah, I think that needs to be changed, in my opinion.
Agree.
Nor do I think that position feels that they have that ability, which is why they come to you.
Right, which is why we, and we've done that from the very beginning when, when we.
Yeah, but I think.
This has been around for a while, but when we started it up again, when Todd, Bill and Mike were commissioners is why we, or when we did that and brought it to the commissioners for approval. Go ahead, I know you, I cut you off a little bit.
No, you're, you're good. I've just, I feel like that's just one person. I mean, that's two people making the decision on that, not in a public meeting, so I don't think.
You want me to draft an amendment to the ordinance? Chris and I to do that or not?
I would prefer it if you guys are okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
We can work on drafting.
I know you guys, I appreciate you guys always coming to us, but you don't have to and I don't like the idea that you don't have to. I mean.
Yeah, someone could go rogue. I mean, not Jace, but somebody else could go rogue. My other question is, we have a, and this isn't the time to bring it up. We can come back when Jace is here. We looked at yard waste as a abatement process, but like tall grass and weeds, for instance, aren't part of that. The yard waste is, is like, if people have a overabundance of, of brush piles or something like that, we can go in and that can be its own violation. But I think the last guy stated something like, well, I'm growing my.
Purposely was not mowing.
Purposely was not mowing to hide the, the stuff.
Did you guys, you two get the email Jace sent you about that?
Yep, and we responded to Jace.
Okay.
Yeah, we were going back and forth a little bit. And I told him that, you know, that needs to be a discussion with the commissioners. Maybe we need to bring Jace in and have this be a topic for a half hour or forty-five minutes maybe, with potential revisions to this because it's.
You're talking about the entire county and.
And then if, if that's, if that's going to be an abatable offense, that could be a lot of properties in the county. People are going to be calling our office and saying, well, such and such has, has grass next to their farm field that's twelve inches high or however tall. You would make that.
Problem. I mean, I think a lot of homeowners would have a fence row or something alongside their house or even just a.
Or some properties that are in the.
The field and then who's supposed to mow this grass that's in between a field and your yard, I mean.
You know, those are more so.
That's a huge problem.
We do not want to go there.
Okay.
I'm telling you. You talk about a can of worms.
So I do have a question though, only because that guy said that. So what would you guys do? Like for that, I mean, this person has a whole yard full of junk and if he doesn't mow, then you can't see it. So how, how do you take care of a problem like that?
Wait till winter.
Wait till winter?
It's going to, it's going to go down and you're going to, it pops, all that stuff will come back up and then a little bit.
And they're getting still complaint driven.
And if it's an old car, rusted out car, you hopefully would see the car above the weeds, maybe. I mean, big stuff. I don't know.
Neighbor could send his drone, his drone over and take pictures.
Right? I just wonder because he specifically said he purposely was. I just wonder, because he specifically said he purposely wasn't mowing his grass.
It's an ambiguous area, if it...
A lot of grass in the country doesn't get mowed.
Yeah, yeah. I, I get that, I just, it just seems weird, because it's so...
It's a problem, but I don't know how you solve it, because if you require people to keep their grass down in the country, that's a big can of worms.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to, I don't want to open that up.
Right?
No, that's fine.
I do not.
You said it, wait till winter when the grass goes down, and you're gonna see all that stuff anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, the other part of this, real quick, is that if there's a noxious weed, such as a Canadian thistle, then that property owner can, if, if it's a neighbor, can report it to the township trustee, and it's their responsibility to make sure that that noxious weed is taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the tall grass that he had was not any of those...
No, it must be a noxious weed.
So, he's just, that's a, that's a loophole of this, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, but most of that, his property was small enough, you could still see a lot of it, but that excuse of his was...
Is there such a thing, and this was probably Andrew, is there such a thing that if a property, if a complaint was received on a property, that the mowing of the grass or whatever could be addressed on that property, but not just...
Just the junk, I think.
Okay.
And also, if it's mowed grass and weeds, like if it's a compost pile, or a pile of...
Right, if we, if we can address...
We can address piles of rotting weeds.
Yeah, yeah.
But not the growing weeds.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question, but I, I don't think you could spot it to where only if it's a home and there's a complaint, I don't think you should necessarily...
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I don't think you could have it be complaint driven and not apply to everybody. That's, yeah.
Trying to see if we can get the county to look nice.
Okay. Back to weekly meetings.
Do you guys want Chris and Jace to come in to discuss anything else on the ordinance?
Or once we get it revised, and bring it to you guys, we can...
We'll try to do a new hearing language, and...
Yeah.
And then send it out to you.
Yeah, okay.
And then the link, yeah, with the commissioners having the say in their debate, yeah.
I'll draft something up and shoot it out to you, Chris.
Okay, I'll just schedule it when you guys are ready for that, and then everybody can...
Oh, great, yeah, okay.
Okay. I want to go back to the weekly here, or weekly meetings, and, uh, I just think that's what we need to do, but it's up to the commissioners.
I think the system is doing very well with every other week. If we need special meetings, I'm, I, I don't have any issue with doing a special meeting. Um, I think this problem with the auditor's office, that was apparently an issue, uh, can be worked out with IT. Uh, if we need to get her more, uh, that office more space to send material, then that's an IT issue, it isn't a weekly meeting issue. I, I'm not in favor of going back to once a week.
Joe?
I'm not in favor either, um, I think the two examples are examples that we need to look into. I, I thought the truck was voted on, but if it wasn't, then we need to really make sure we take care of that. Um, but I, I don't know if having an extra meeting on that would have solved that problem, I think it was just a misstep by us. Um, but I, if we do need to have more meetings when we have certain things come up, like the health insurance, we have some extra meetings on and stuff like that, so, that's just where I stand on it for now, so...
Okay, good enough.
Now, to clarify real quick, um, Andrew, you're gonna put in with that policy about how the hearings are gonna be ran and everything? I know you want any of those to be separate days in the commissioner meetings?
They don't have to be separate days.
As we're kind of talking about it, yeah.
You would, you could just set them up for like a half hour slot or something, potentially? Is that, so, um, like, typically, well, the way we do the hearings, for example, with Wat, the town of Waterloo, is they're just scheduled at the beginning of the, of Waterloo's town council meetings, so, I mean, you could schedule them all at nine o'clock or something, and, and just have it heard, and then start everything up for the rest of your meeting at nine thirty or ten, whatever you would think.
My concern was, we don't want to have, I mean, try to be in accordance of their time, have them sitting out there while we're doing other business, waiting for their, their turn to have a conference.
So, you could just set them all up at nine o'clock, and that would handle that?
Set time on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, have it be at like nine o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
It needs to be at a set time, for sure, because you also have notice that has to go out for the hearings, for the public. I think at least forty-eight hours, excluding weekends and holidays.
Well, and that, um...
Which could be on your agenda, partially for the agenda.
Yeah, as I say, Jace always checks with me, so he knows which meeting that he needs to tell them to come to, and at what time, so that would be part of his noticing that he sends out on...
So, you're already handling that a little bit.
Yeah.
And that's what I was gonna say, is we, we put the time on there, that if it's at nine o'clock, or ten thirty, or whatever time she's available, or she has it in the agenda. Um, do you want the language to actually say it's coming before the commissioners for a hearing?
I think that's what they want.
Like, you're, like, you're actually gonna swear people in?
Uh, that's how I was approaching it.
Or do you want just it to be a, like, you're voting on a contract? Like, you're just, you're just getting it and...
I think we need to have a procedure of like, how many times is our code compliance person going to reach out, how many months they're gonna be working on the process before we kind of get involved in it, because...
And I think they have that right now, we would just be adding the commissioner hearing is sort of like another layer before we file suit.
Right, we need to, we need to button up this a little...
Do they have to have a hearing?
No.
Before they can file suit?
Right now, no.
But it, but he made the point of if they come in and they swear, and they say, hey, I'll get it done in thirty days, like the two gentlemen did, and they don't, it gives us more leg, a leg to stand on in the court, saying, hey, we did try working with them.
Correct.
They swear they were gonna get it done, they did not, we move forward, so I feel like that would be how I'd feel, that'd be a better way for us, because that gives us more...
That's how Waterloo does it, I think that's probably how Garrett and Auburn do it as well, it's...
They act, they actually do a hearing.
Actually, yeah, in Waterloo, we actually do a hearing, and the person comes on and puts it on the record, saying, yes, we agree to do this in thirty days, and if it's not, we're proceeding with, turn it down, or going to court to tear it down.
I can give you the quick Cliff Notes version, I hope I don't get too wordy, on what we actually do right now, that's not in the ordinance. So, Jace will go out, get the complaint, inspect the property, we'll then determine if it's actually a public nuisance. If it's somebody that just has an extra bag of trash sitting next to their curb that the trash guy didn't get, probably not a public nuisance, right? But if it's an abundance of stuff, that, that's accumulated, it's, it's rotting.
Like, they're not using a trash service, we had a house that was that way, where it's just bags of trash in the front yard, that's a health hazard.
So, Jace determines the initial complaint, is a violation or not. He sends the first letter, gives ten days to abate, that's in the ordinance. He then, if he works with the property owner, he's working with the property owner on his own, right? So, it could be, I'm gonna, can you give me thirty days, I'm doing whatever, and Jace will say yes. So, then you're at forty days that it's been sitting there, right? And then Jace will send out the second letter and say, hey, we have this agreement, um, you have an additional ten days to get the, from the date of the letter, to get this abated. If it's not, then Jace sends out a final letter that says, you need to come before the commissioners to, um, have them vote on, or whatever, um...
And that's not...
Whether this is gonna get abated or not. That's, those other two steps are not technically in the ordinance, right? So, we, we will clean this up.
Their process.
Right, right.
Like, like a process I would do in my office, and then when it needs to come.
Correct, so, Jace does two additional steps that are not in the ordinance, and then you guys do a third additional step that's not in the ordinance. So, we will clean, if you want to continue how it's being done, we just need to get it written in the ordinance, and I just wanted to be clear, I wanted to be clear, if you wanted to have an actual hearing, or if you wanted it just to be, you know, you have to come to the commissioners and, and, and state your case. They can appeal, we have an appeal process in the ordinance, too, that if they don't believe their process, their, or their property is in violation, they have to come to you guys for the appeal. But it's, and that's in the ordinance, but those three other steps are not.
I think the other three should be in the ordinance, and I think it should be a hearing.
We just need to get that cleaned up, then.
That's just my personal opinion on it.
A hearing?
I mean, he, they've had, through those steps, you had plenty of opportunities, so...
Question about a hearing, then?
Yeah.
If we're gonna have a hearing, we say we start the commissioners meeting?
Yes.
We have to adjourn that meeting, go into the hearing, and go back in the commissioner?
Yes, like, that, that's how we typically do it, is you start the hearing, and note, you know, it's nine oh one, and we're starting the hearing, and...
So, we'd have to advertise both commissioner meetings?
You just suspend the commissioner meeting.
Start and stop, with the start of both of them.
Well, I think...
And it is part, I mean, it's...
It's part of your meeting?
I think it's part of your meeting, but it's a special hearing you start and stop, within your meeting?
Within your meeting, so I don't think you would have to do two different times.
Yeah, I don't think you have to adjourn.
Because it's all part of the same, it's all part of the same notice.
I mean, it's a good question, but I, I don't know that you have to adjourn the commissioners meeting, you just have to start the hearing and then adjourn. We have public hearings on opening, we have public...
Bids.
Bids, yeah.
Bid process, and...
Yeah.
And that sort of thing, and, uh...
You would just...
Uh, we don't adjourn the commissioner meeting for that.
I just want clarification.
I don't think we have to, that's a good question.
It's a good question.
I'm paying it either way, I just want clarification.
I don't think we have to adjourn the meeting to do it.
Okay.
But now that we have this somewhat ironed out, then I can also word things difference on, different on our agenda?
Yeah.
That would give up more, I mean, I generally have the agenda posted by Fridays, which would be your forty-eight hours, but either way, the noticing is done by code enforcement to meet that requirement.
How many of these do we have, kind of out there?
I don't know, I'm meeting with Jace tomorrow morning to go over, um, process, and then, or this process, talk about how many properties we have to abate, and then how much more time we think it will take to get those properties abated. We probably get an additional three to five a month, and so I just don't know how many have accumulated that, I mean, and Jace goes out and starts the process, but in all reality, the hours that we have are probably only enough for three to five at a time, I would say, I don't know.
Very few.
Huh?
I know he has two more that he wants to bring to you guys.
Yeah, we're talking about those tomorrow.
That were different than the last two that he just had.
Yeah.
He mentioned he has some other ones he wanted to bring in front of us, so I was kind of curious how many more of these are...
There's, and, right, and there's, and there's, there's probably a lot that are just in kind of a, a watching phase.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if Jace and him, and the prop, Jason and him, Jace and the property owner agree to give thirty days, then, you know, Jace is on a waiting period for thirty days to go out and re-inspect that property, so, um, it's not like ten hours are, are, you know, strictly on these three properties, it's over the course of weeks to get those.
Oh, yeah, I, the hours, I wasn't really too concerned about the hours, I'll let you figure that out, I was more concerned of how long these two seem to have kind of dragged out, like...
Yeah.
If there was an issue, it needs to be addressed pretty quickly, and I think if we have it in a policy, like, hey, this is how many days, this, 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 and then it comes in front of us, it helps these issues be addressed quicker.
And I think a lot of that, too, was, was trusting that the property owner is going to, and I've been in this government role long enough to know that you can, you can sniff out who's gonna, who's, who's, who's gonna comply and who's not, but you still have to give them that time, right, to, to do it, so it's, it's tightening up our ordinance, and then, you know, because currently, right now, they have ten days, and if they don't do it within ten days, technically, Jace could order Andrew, that's not the word I wanted to use, but ask Andrew to, to take it to court for cleanup. I mean, it could be that quick, but we allow...
Yeah, that seems a little quick.
Give the property owner, yeah, we allow the property owner a little, a benefit of the doubt, more so, to, to abate their properties.
You want to work with people, but on the other hand, at some point after a couple of layers of protections, if they're not doing anything...
Right.
That means they just won't, they're one of those people that just won't follow...
Right.
What they're supposed to do, abusing the system.
Ten days does seem a little short, in my mind. Um, I guess my recommendation would be thirty days instead of ten, uh, because I, I'm, I'm using my own experiences that I've seen, that, uh, those cars and trash didn't show up in thirty days, it was over years, most likely, and, uh, you know, I, ten day, ten days is, if, if they have to get a dumpster, or two, or five, that's not always reasonable. Go ahead.
I think that that initial, and I could be wrong, but I think the initial ten day is mainly to try to get that person to even communicate with the officer, because then once they communicate, they might say, okay, give me thirty days, so then you're that much further out. I, I think that was the idea when that was discussed.
I believe you're right, actually, I don't remember.
I remember you and Todd talking about it, but I think that's why.
Ten days is awfully quick, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that was a note, more of a notification, that you've got thirty days to do.